There she is.
Are we, gee, are we ready?
Yeah, ready.
Okay.
Hey, you're ready to proceed, and having you guys on.
So, am I up? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving.
So.
So those of you who don't know who I am, Diane Nicole, um, marriage and family therapist who's been promoting a healthy relationships skills course to be possibly an elected chair. And, uh, I don't have, you know, the letter I gave out last time didn't have the wrong bill number. Because the bill for the Assembly and the Senate are changed in a new year. So what I will do is I'll pass this around and you can add it, um, the numbers here. Okay?
Great.
And I also spent some time, uh, on the phone with Kathy Hokel's, our governor's office, and to check in on the bill, that's how I got to new bill numbers. And, uh, it has been patched, uh, by the Assembly and the Senate, but not by the government yet. So I'm still working on that. I spent some time on the phone today. And I also want to just tell you that I've talked with the students that come to the board meetings about their input, and so hopefully they're gonna be here in the next meeting to put their input in. And also, um, anybody know who Kelly Purcell is? Do you know Kelly?
I think not.
Okay. Kelly Purcell was a teacher here not long ago for a few years in the Science Department. And she has, uh, and she doesn't mind telling me there. She couldn't come here to represent herself and speak here. Uh, but she has had time with me as a therapist, and she wanted to advocate for this course because of how it helped her marriage and her children. So, the other thing is, it went to, uh, going to Tricia, it went to the three committee members. I don't know if we got that today.
I was not able to open it.
Oh.
That is no doubt.
Okay. All right, well, hopefully Kelly will be here at the next meeting.
It just said.
In person.
Just wasn't gonna happen.
Excuse me?
It said it wasn't gonna open.
It required software that I am not able to unload, to download on my work computer. Which is all that I have.
Okay. I will try to rectify that. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was, um, I'm in practice still, and recently I have a new client, a fifteen-year-old, uh, almost woman. And also another family with a sixteen-year-old, uh, girl. Uh, one of them has, uh, cuts her arm. And actually said this past week, I like being mean. This is a new client, and, uh, I just wanted to give them as examples of how difficult it is for, for students to know how to interact in a healthy way. And also to promote the relationships with their families. So this is why I am so gung ho here, I'm Eldred.
Persistent, that's what we'll say, persistent.
Persistent is, pardon my little name, because I want to be able to prevent all these dysfunctional relationships that come to me. And they're regular people like you and I. So, that's why I'm so passionate about this. And, uh, if you have any ones here, uh, questions about that, please ask me. Or any comments.
Any other person signed up?
Uh, no one else signed up.
All right, typically after a public comment, we give everyone a chance and then a board response. Any board responses you'd add?
I do not have any board responses, thank you.
All right, I have one. And this someone would try to break through a ice jam that we seem to have around this topic. Our district has invested heavily, their program that is nationally recognized called Ruler. We spent the last couple of years trying to make sure that our adults were prepared to navigate the nuances of this system. Covers lots of different areas, social, emotional learning, healthy relationships, goal setting, self-talk, et cetera, et cetera. It's a pretty long list. I have yet to see, the curriculum committee has yet to see this component of Ruler in action in classrooms. Specifically the healthy relationships piece. So I cannot comment on the strength of it, but I know how we've done with the rest of Ruler. And it seems to be a very robust program. We've met the leaders from Yale who developed this, complete confidence in them. We have yet to see this component in action. I've also seen what you've shared with me. And Melissa and Carrie have seen it as well. This is the Relationship Foundation's nonviolent communication space. And I was impressed then, I'll say it again, I'm still impressed. I'm still impressed by what you've shared. However, you see my predicament. I cannot advocate for something new until we have an understanding of what exists that we've already invested years into studying. So when Mary shared with me the slide from Ruler several meetings ago, we tried it. I made it clear, we need to bump that up to the top of our priority list. So we can see that in action, in how it works and interacts with the kids. So, I am not gonna tell you to ever stop promoting the thing that you see as valuable. I also wanna make it crystal clear in this meeting that we are not without our own resources in this regard. Now we just have to see them come to bear so we can make an assessment. And we can also ask the teachers and the kids as well. Does anyone have anything to add to that?
Can I make more of a comment and response?
Sure.
Uh, for those, I don't know who knows what about the Ruler, but the Ruler, oh yeah, it's for the teachers, it's not for the students. The students will learn the skills of a healthy relationship. Teachers have so much on their plate already. Yes, they will interact with their students differently, but we do not have an actual course on how to teach the students about the health issue. That's the difference.
Okay, I heard that, and I'm saying the exact opposite.
Yeah.
That we have decided to implement Ruler for our teachers first. So our teachers obviously needed to be comfortable with that program before we allowed them to implement that with their kiddos. And as I understand it, now we are ready to roll that out to students, is that correct?
That's correct. So I just wanna close, make sure we all have common understanding of the implementation of Ruler. Year one is support for educators, and then year two and three is using it within the classroom. So all of the resources that are now uploaded on our website are specific lessons that can be used and strategies integrated into the classroom.
Into the classroom.
Today, we saw some really great examples of teachers doing that.
Yes, we did.
And that.
Yes, we did. So we're gonna continue to monitor that. And, uh, this is our job, to make some determinations about which direction the district should go in. No one is doubting the need for our young people to be better attached with their emotions, able to express them and navigate. That is unquestioned. No one's doubting the need for adults to be able to self-regulate, right? To be there, be present, so they can assist children. We all understand, coming out of the pandemic, it's been, uh, that both young adults and adults are stressed. We understand that. And we do have a system in place. We will monitor it, and we will continue to appraise this group, but by no means, Diana, should you stop promoting what you see as valuable? I'm just saying there's an alternative. Now, and I wasn't able to say that three months ago because I didn't know about this. At least I didn't know that we were ready to roll it out for students, though. There is a relationship component to Ruler.
Right, but the difference is that it takes a lot of time to learn the skills. And the teachers are teaching that old subject.
I think we're ready to, we're ready to move on now, but I, we're here. Understand that you are heard. Next on the agenda is it minutes? I looked at the minutes from last time, and thank you for the folks behind the scenes who are putting together the board summaries. We saw those almost in the next two days, right? Those are fantastic, so, thank you. I approve the minutes. That?
Looks good to me.
All right.
I also approve.
Okay, minutes approved. And Erin is not with us electronically either, right?
I don't see that.
All right, next up, four point one, curriculum innovations. Strategic partnership work session meeting instructional rounds. We just went through all those today. And, uh, I like when Pat talks about this, she's very smart.
I'm very enthusiastic.
You wanna share what we, what we experienced today?
Starting at about eight thirty this morning, we visited, Elbert and I visited one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine classrooms in a day, and had, um, a wonderful, um, half hour plus discussion with Elizabeth Valerica at, uh,
Balaestria.
Balaestria. Balaestria at, um, at DeWitt. So we were looking at, um, seventh and eighth grade instruction, or sixth and seventh grade instruction. Did we have any eighth grade instruction? We had, okay, you were eighth grade.
At Boynton, yes.
At, okay, at Boynton. Um, and so this was the curriculum committee's first in-person look at, um, middle school, the middle school math curriculum, the reimagined, redesigned, detract heterogeneous math curriculum that our math faculty had been advocating for, in order to decrease stress, increase instructional quality, increase equity. I would say, Elbert and I got to talk a bit afterwards. We were tremendously impressed by every classroom we went into. Uh, we were, we were impressed by the quality of teaching, the level of engagement, the, um, the richness of the curriculum, the richness of the diversity in the classrooms that we saw, the engagement by the students. And, and we've looked at math classes before. I think we, we might have gotten into one, uh, class here. Uh, the co-teaching, um, it was, it was just tremendously, um, impressive to see, first of all, how much time that our teachers have put into modifying and enriching the standards-based curriculum. That, that, you know, we have this, the Common Core standards, with standards from New York State, but our, our faculty have spent enormous amounts of planning time making those standards meaningful and accessible to students, and filling in material to make students more engaged, and also to make the units more cohesive and follow one to the other, and to add material that our teachers realize that students need in order to be successful. So it's not like they're just taking the standards and teaching them. They spent enormous amounts of time, effort, and thought in, um, in creating curricular materials, sharing those. We also, um, learned about the, um, the, uh, I wanna say, not monitoring, but the, the, the paying attention to how students are doing in each module and making sure that students are not left behind, and that students who need additional help with certain modules, get that additional support so that they can continue to, to progress. And, um, I am, um, I'm very interested, the, the students we saw three years ago before lockdown, we visited some of the classrooms and saw the very, very first implementations of the heterogeneous instruction for sixth graders in fall of 2019. Those students are now at the high school and it's, and, and the math curriculum is fully implemented. And they were the most, I'd say, responsive and engaged math classes I've seen in my time on the board and, um, and on the curriculum committee. And I just commend the faculty of, of, and leadership of those schools for the work that you put in. What did I leave out, Elbert?
See, I wonder if you did?
That's perfect. I mean, I mean resounding, resounding success and, and everything that, that you had hoped and we had hoped, and at a tremendous amount of work that, that we greatly appreciate.
Just a couple of things to add. In this great work we do, the nine of us as volunteers, we also seem to get caught up in things that excite people in the moment. Like what's happening with the superintendent? Oh, there's a fight on the bus. Oh, somebody forgot beans at lunch. And people will wrap their minds around those, and those become the story of the day. Financing, what's the state gonna do to us? About this new state mandated thing we have to respond to, we escaped that boom. Too often, even here, despite our efforts, despite the quality of our leadership, this conversation gets left behind. I'm here to say that it is time for this district and our adults in this community to make a change. And to begin focusing on the most important bit, what is happening with our children in classrooms? Breaking down this math regime that led to two elementary schools having the kids who advanced algebra was decades long in coming. We have seen evidence now that it is finally going well, and it's possible. Need to continue to promote that on every hilltop. And let's be honest, do I personally expect every child who struggled in math in fourth grade to suddenly become algebra expert? I don't even think that's important. Point is to give them the skills, point is to give them the confidence, point is to give them the time to figure out if that path is for them. And we are confident by what we saw today that we're gonna allow those kids the grace in all three of those areas to hopefully make those decisions. Uh, as for Elizabeth Balaestria?
Balaestria.
Balaestria. She walked, uh, Pat and I through, uh, she had organized her data using Google, Google, Google database, I'm blanking on it.
Sheets.
Google Drive.
Yeah.
Uh, she used Google Drive to organize all the information about the kiddos. Uh, she used Sheets, how she used Word docs, how you guys are using PDFs, color-coded, you could track almost individually what's happened with each kid, at least what's happened in each class. And, uh, Dr. Brown and I were having that conversation this summer. We know we've layered seven, eight types of things on a cake for our teachers, right? Culturally this, historical that, anti-this. And I asked them, what have we given teachers to manage all this? How, how do they pull from each of these aspects so they can implement it in some form or another? Well, I saw how one teacher organized that today for the department. I have to say, I'm not sure there is one way, after seeing how she did. Right? Everyone needs to be able to come up with a way that works for their department, let's just put it like that. And, uh, what she showed me inspired me that I wasn't in the woods on this one. There is something to this, being able to pull from these sources, and we saw some of it was done. So, again, you guys came up with the idea. It's our high school and middle school teachers. We have the expertise to our executive level, put into place. Now, year three, right, year four, we seem to have legs. And I just can't wait to see the results of this. Right? If, if no other child decides to take algebra, we're confident we're gonna have some pretty confident math students whenever they do. So thank you for that. And I have nothing else to add. Any questions, comments? Mary, Lily, anything to add? Watch the screen.
If I may, if I may, since we have guests here and I'm delighted to ask them questions and pick their wonderful brains. You know, I think as we, as we emerge from the realities of the pain of COVID, right, and how that has impacted our young people and our, our adults, caregivers, staff, and all of us, right? I, I, I want us to remember that there are realities associated with that and we're continuing to support, um, young people in ways that I'm finding are extremely thoughtful and multifaceted, knowing that there were some kids who might have logged in or didn't log in for a year. Right? That's just real. And they learned lots of things and maybe didn't learn a lot of math. And so, the ways, you know, I have a super short slideshow later, but the, some of the ways that I think our teachers have gotten creative, our teachers and administrators have gotten creative around how are we gonna wrap our arms around kids? Instead of just being annoyed or trying to do more skill and drill because they didn't get it, or there's a ton of learning loss, like, that has been extraordinarily, um, inspiring and, and incredible too. Because I see, I read so many articles across the country where people, I mean, obviously, last month with the report in Key Ang that student math scores are much lower than they were pre-pandemic. I'm seeing a lot of, again, skill and drill, um, very skills-based interventions that people are suggesting. And I don't think that's the only way forward, right? It's very clear to me that there are, you know, there are multiple ways forward. Like the super aging, very visual, very meaning-making work that you saw today. Like in Jen's class, like in Kathleen's class. By the way, you should be doing somewhat similar things, but yours was somewhere advanced, it's so fabulous. It was really cool. Yes, it was really neat. Yeah.
Thanks for sending us to that workshop, by the way, that, like, inspired that workshop.
Thanks, the board.
Thanks for sending us to that workshop.
For they authorized the board. We don't, like, come up with, with the conferences and trainings that we think you should go to. Uh, our, our, you do math and our teachers. Actually, no. Actually, the teachers were like, can we go to this? And I said, yes, everybody should be able to go to it. And then they put something in the minutes and we vote, so.
Right.
But, but, you know, along those lines, I remember that one of the, the issues that you brought to us was just the stress of the accelerated math and the stress on the students, both self-imposed and externally imposed by having to cover more than was humanly able to do because of the acceleration combined with the Common Core standards. And, you know, have, actually having had two kids who went through the accelerated program and knowing that, that, you know, even with good math skills and parents who can't, like, help them, that, you know, there's always been pressure there. But, but, you know, what, what I, what I really saw today was just, just, just an absence of that stress, a real, a real interest in, in learning. The final class we went to had, had kids from, you know, kids who were, were coming from the community classroom along with a kid who was double accelerating, all in the same class, and everyone making, making comments and making contributions to the same very rich material. And, and I was in, you know, both of your classes, and, and it was very similar dealing with patterns and sets, and I was really engaged and remembering that I too can solve these math problems with a little bit of, of, uh, instruction. And, and this idea that, that, you know, that classes don't have to be the treadmill to get to, you know, the brass ring, that they can be a, a rich learning experience for everyone, I think is a really big step forward in student mental and emotional health, and teachers too.
If I can just say something about that, um, and you said something earlier about this, but for me, and I'm not discrediting, discrediting us at all, but, um, co-teaching has been a huge part of that for me. Like that, I, you were in my room, so, like, I, my co-teacher and I are, like, I couldn't do it without a second person in that room, there's no way. Like that, that has made such a difference. So the support from the district, letting us have co-talk classes, has been huge for us. Also along those lines, with our algebra starting last year, we started to implement some new support systems for algebra kids, and that's been wonderful. We have an algebra support class that kids go to, which has been super helpful. Um, and we have co-taught algebra classes, and at point, all three of our algebra classes are co-talk classes. And that's made a world of difference too. So I'm, like, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to discredit our teaching or anything, but like, that's been, those things have been huge, it's critical, yeah, yeah.
Well, I, and I, I would say that, that, you know, I saw an example of the co-teaching when it was first implemented and people were still trying to work it out. And then I saw it again today. And, you, you know, you're seeing just real, real partnerships, like tag teaming, um, and it, it, it's, it was very different than some of the things I saw in, in 2019, which is basically, okay, you know, you've got the teacher at the front of the room, and then you have a lot of supports because there are, there might be one-on-one aids or something. But this was a real, this was a real synergy. And I think that the, the co-teaching does create that, that atmosphere in the class that, that, um, just kind of opens it up to a broader acceptance, you know, a broader discussion. All the math classes I've seen have been, you know, have, have been inclusive in that, in that students are, are giving answers and asking questions. But this was, this was just, um, a level of, of collaboration that was really profound. I, I did not, I mean, basically, it was something that you felt was necessary and Amanda and, and the finance committee worked out how to, how to support that, and it's absolutely worked out.
And I will say, your admin's been great too. So like, you are Andrew's class this morning. So Andrew and I both teaching great work, in and out of each other's classrooms all the time. That co-planning time built in is like critical.
Yes.
Yeah, colleagues, mentioned that.
We do everything together, so like, without the support of admin.
They mentioned that, and they thanked us, and we, of course, took credit, but we didn't do it, maybe. So we take their suggestions pretty seriously. The one other thing I wanna comment on is, um, the support class that happened over the summer. Uh, Elizabeth, was it Elizabeth, Miss who talked to us about that?
Yes.
How you were able to catch those kids up? How the assistant, uh, principal at DeWitt talked to those kids. And I understand this is not remediation at all, we think you can do it. And working over the summer, they did get to a position where they could then move forward, and now those lessons are gonna be incorporated into the regular year. So that was really, really also inspiring to hear, right? So, you know, the proof will be in the pudding. I think, again, to our public, whoever's watching this, to you all, to my board colleagues, everyone seems comfortable when there's a hole in the ground that's out there, thinking, oh, that's not gonna be fixed overnight, right? That's gonna leave a mark, it'll take a couple of years to get that right. But when it comes to these academic shifts, everybody expects it to happen yesterday. And I, I think, again, we just need to do a better job educating our community and informing them what that looks like. What does a strategic change looks like in our classrooms? And, uh, one of you or several of you said today, it's a three-year process. Literally, at least three years to change something this time. So.
Pro-pandemic in there.
Pro-pandemic, what is that? Dog years now, twenty-one years? Three years pandemic, it's twenty-one years in the regular world. Three years pandemic is 21 years in the regular world. But thank you. Your passion comes through. It's clear you love this subject. You love kids. You just get to sit back and watch the magic. So truly appreciate it. And if there's nothing else in the order on four one, for four two, we'll move on to four three. This is what I'm interested in here about as well. What internal and external strategic partners best help us with these kinds of challenges?
Have we done, have we had the four two though? Because there's a short presentation.
Oh, middle school math to Algebra I? Oh, is that a presentation we're talking about?
It doesn't have to be. I just talk.
Okay, go for it.
It's a little, yeah, there's a little power. If you need a visual, Corinna, I'll send it to you. Is she the only person watching? Great.
I can even scale your stuff.
No, it's totally, it's totally good. These guys all know
Oh, yeah.
the the supports that we have in place. So if there were other folks from the community, I was just going to sort of ground us in in our timeline. We used to have this interactive timeline that still exists, right? We started the conversations all the way to when we made the change in the fall of that April of fall of 2019 to heterogeneous math and where we are now. We also have some pretty helpful, I think, communications that are on our custom website, ithicaschools.org/math that you can check out. My email is in the chat. And I'm happy to, yeah, send you that presentation. And Corinna just emailed and said, yes, Corinna, I will. So we have a number of resources and clarifying documents around course offerings that are middle schools. You know, one of the one of the key pieces of feedback that we received from caregivers and students as we were making this transition was, my goodness, will this create an either-or with the arts? Right? So if you wanted to take band and orchestra, what was that going to do? And what if you also wanted to take earth science in eighth grade as well? So over the past couple of years, you know, we really worked to clarify what all of the different offerings are at middle school. Obviously, they're much less vast than at Ithaca High School or at LACS. But there are some visuals there to clarify what what the options are. And we've been sharing those at younger grades, just so folks know when they come in in sixth grade, you're going to have a series of options as they go forward. And then the other things that are on there that are really helpful are the seventh grade standards that are our, essentially, the power standards, the really big important standards that we're looking at to ensure kids are mastering, to demonstrate readiness then for algebra in the eighth grade, right? Knowing that the Algebra Companion Course is also going to cover and allow students experience with content and practice standards that they wouldn't necessarily get in Algebra I, right? But that level of readiness is really key. So, you know, looking at Elizabeth Bautista's spreadsheet of standards and ensuring that kids are are tracking and are meeting the expectations in particular. But I think being able to articulate where kids are really specifically around standards is part of ensuring we're actually getting kids ready for Algebra I. Those who are, you know, doing the work and responding well to the level of instruction, right? And so that's all on there as well. We just wanted to be as clear as possible with kids and with families. And then there's a series of supports. So we're trying to figure out lots of different ways to get kids into Algebra I and like Kathleen said, we want to also keep kids in Algebra I, right? Like, our goal is to ensure solid foundation in mathematical understanding and to address our goals around having a good function. Both of those goals, we feel like function simultaneously. It's not super easy to do both of them, right? We're trying to. So, you know, we have this targeted course over the summer where, you know, we paid a seventh grade teacher to work with kids in order to get them ready so that they could pass the entrance exam and take Algebra I and then try to co-teach Algebra I in order to support kids and providing support labs for those who are in it, right? We also have started something pretty extraordinary with a group of young women, predominantly women and women of color at Cornell University. And we contracted with them to to run Ithaca Math Circles. So we have after-school math circles for mostly girls are signing up for them. And we're really pulling in as many girls of color as possible in order to work through a lot of essentially logic problems and having fun with complex mathematics. So that's an after-school opportunity that we've put in place. And then we just hired a series of Ithaca High School students who are like math and are interested in being paid to sort of as tutors for our middle schoolers. So they're they're kiddos who enjoy mathematics, have demonstrated a commitment to equity and inclusion and are ready, willing, and able to provide support. Through a grant that Mary has received, we're able to pay the students and work with Youth Bureau in order to pay them as well. So Susan Damskin, remember her? She's now the engagement specialist at at DuWitt. She's not the department leader anymore, right? But she and I, along with Angela Knight, who's the engagement specialist at Wayne, we're working to train those students. And we're just going to start that up in January. So that's, that's pretty, pretty cool as well to really ensure we're providing enough support for young people to get into algebra from all sorts of angles. So this sort of leads into four point three because I think we know we need to connect more with the community, with our Ithaca community, and sustain those relationships and systematize those relationships in order to provide to provide some more support for for heterogenous math and ensuring more students are taking Algebra I sustain in college.
I imagine this has to be refreshing and regenerative for the teachers as well. We were watching things today that were fun. Sets, equations, right? There's this, I had never thought about math in those ways before, right? What were the different methods for figuring out those those patterns, right? Rain, lava. This is what? Right? For us, it's, you know, us growing up, it's a freight train coming that direction. Someone is jumping on the Statue of Liberty with a penny over here. So that was pretty cool. And
I'm so old, we just did equations.
So, you know, seeing seeing some joy infused curriculum was great. It was great for me. And I remember Elizabeth telling us pretty directly that she was not necessarily resisting, but she had to have some come-to-the-like moments.
Oh, no, she said she didn't want to do it at the time. Yeah.
She didn't. Hey, I'm giving breaks.
I think she was worried. I think she was worried. Had some anxiety.
And now she's also mastered the, almost mastered the SMARTboard technology. So it's great to hear that this is infusing some joy back into your ranks as well.
So just just a question that that Eldred and I were were pondering afterwards, that we were, we were, obviously, part of this was an equity measure for low-income students at risk, underrepresented students in in higher-level STEM courses. But what, has this had an effect on gender representation in Algebra I at this point? I don't even know what the breakdown was before or whether there was a differentiation, a gender differentiation differentiation between kids who were accelerated.
I think pretty, I'm pretty sure before this, I had more girls than I did boys. I've had more girls than boys.
Okay.
A lot. So I, I don't know what it is this year. I have boys. But yeah, I think that shift happened a while ago. I'm sure that it coincided with us.
That's good to hear. And the other question we have was help me get the language right. We know that a lot of students who have parents were into STEM, but also into STEM. That we know that a lot of zero-gend students, I guess we could call them, who haven't been exposed to that, who we see typically struggle. I'm also curious about how that paradigm is going to change.
I don't remember it.
And how to measure it exactly. Every student's going to have parents who work in a secret town in Cornell or do something behind the scenes at a Board Warner, right, that involves a lot of math. So I have some thoughts about bringing some new energy into classrooms for that. So let's let's continue to see how we can work together on this. What's the name of that group, Lily? The student group up in Cornell? Do they have a name?
Yeah, Maya actually.
Hello.
Hello. Maya Mao actually created nonprofit in order to do this. Her mom was founding class of LACS. And she is now a Cornell student and wanted to give back to the community. And she is not a math major, but believes in supporting young people's math, mathematical thinking and believes in our goals around equity and inclusion. So she created Ithaca Math Circles.
It's called Ithaca Math Circles?
Yes, and now she has an entire registered nonprofit and a domain name and ithacmathcircles.org. And it's pretty impressive for a Cornell junior.
Wow. Did you say her parents were her?
Her mother was founding, was in, yeah, founding classicals, yeah.
I got to meet this superstar. That's great. All right. So thank you for that. That takes us right to four three. Any other questions, comments before we leave that subject and go to our action items? Thanks for hosting us. You guys.
Thank you all.
Come a long way from those conversations in those dark auditoriums at the WIT. Boy, happens.
Those are fun.
So thanks for those. All right, action items aside. Do we have any?
I haven't had much of a chance to think this. We got to through today.
I have some thoughts. We talked about this previously, but I don't know when it should be on the agenda. I'm thinking it's the first meeting in the new year. We can maybe collaborate with finance.
Yes.
Maybe to flesh out the investment we're making in all of these new structures. Now, what we're learning for is about the most significant academic advancement I think I've ever heard of in secondary, like, like that. And I have no idea what it's costing. And I think the community should know what that investment is. And sure, recruitment and retention has a cost, right? There's a cost to to Bob Schapp for bringing in diverse teachers. It's a cost for all this magnificent professional development we saw this summer. There's a cost for equity methods. There's a cost for, what do we call the what do we call the individual experts that we have that we were sharing between certain schools?
Educators for inclusion.
Educators for inclusion. There are the pushing coaches and the master educators. That's the word.
There we go.
There's a body. Nobody's a master now.
Yeah.
No masters now.
But there are lots of costs. And I think you guys have been elegant enough to sort of keep that behind, you know, in the lockbox, so to speak. But I think now that we've got our lane, so there's, it's time to begin expressing that. So a lot of energy it takes to shift the work of a staff of 600. I get that. Well, 600 teachers, much less the rest of the staff. I would go PD for bus drivers, right? I know they're under some pressure right now as well. So let's get a sense of what it's taking for us to implement Dr. Brown's vision in his district. So that's one action item that that's top of mind for me.
I don't have anything to add at this point. I mean, I'm very interested in curricular explorations. I would, I would at some point like to see how this is extending into into the high school. One of the teachers we had lunch with today made the very interesting comment that she would be interested in spending some time in the elementary schools to see how math instruction at that level meshes with your goals and expectations at the middle school to see if there can be some streamlining and cooperation there. And I think that's a really interesting topic. And also, I just want to mention that the the planning time that you have is at the middle schools is not limited just to math, but is across the board through all of the subjects so that you can be more interdisciplinary in your approaches. And I think that's that again is is extremely worthwhile use of time and resources. So if you want to look at that as well, I would, I would love to, I would love to hear more about that.
Yeah, that's, that's good. We had some great conversations with your teachers today about I think the LACS might have the middle schools in our IHS. They might have us on this like a couple of years, but we're learning from them. They had social studies and math teachers working together. Right? And trying to combine those experiences with students so they can understand how critical math is and understanding some of our most entrenched social problem. And to the extent that we can do more of that cross-pollination for our kids, math will become this big scary thing behind the box. So I actually look forward to it so they can have better conversations.
And Lily, both you and Carla mentioned that at lunch, the idea of stats and data science and where that, an expansion of that within the curriculum could, can play a more relevant role in interdisciplinary studies. So so you do great stuff and we just pile more stuff on. Well, they did, they did this. Now they can do this next year.
That's how we roll. That's how we roll. So I didn't want to forget one other action item that's in my brain coming circling back to street data, right? We have to keep that in our close to the top of our agenda. We have to figure out how we're going to keep measuring that that qualitative experience of our kiddos. And I'm a third way through the book. And it's fantastic. It's expanding my mind, but I had not gotten to the point where anybody was talking about how to express that, right, on surveys. And it can build my feeling on surveys. So we were exposed to a company who's trying to do some try to come up with a technological model to measure some of that. I don't know if that's relevant to what we're trying to do, but I don't want to lose that train of thought. Because it's, it's going to be one other thing we have to explain to the school. Right? And prove that we're doing with fidelity and that it matters. And that it means something when our kids matriculate and try to go on to the next level. Whether it's work or college, or either one of those next landing spots, prepared for what we're doing. Are they accepting our children because of that? Is there pushback still about the quantitative? The more we can all Before we can all talk about that collectively, I think that off, we and our community will be. And I don't feel the need to talk for four more minutes. If there is nothing else for our agenda, I think we can give ourselves some minutes to stretch for more than.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Seriously, you guys can stand up and yell again, we appreciate it. But you started us down this path, so it's all your fault.